How much would it cost to be on this? Because we let it last, I haven't run out of time for a check in a couple nights. This was the chip. This is what's sitting there. How many? They sent two eight. He never had a score. So I saw. Yes. I said, "What's up with you?" Okay. So. So. Yeah. Yeah. I'm retiring. I'm retiring. Unless I hit the wire. Exactly. Exactly. New Jersey. Certainly a great opportunity. Thanks. No, it's one hour. It's a small state, so. You know, you can get around. Anywhere you're willing, we can. Thanks, I appreciate the service. Look, I've been saying I wasn't sure, though. I thought you were. If you need anything, or if you want me to provide any information, I don't know. I get it. I'm sorry. I mean, three sheets of paper. What do we do? Is it like? You make the line. It's more than. I think they're right. I agree. First, we can go to discussion. I believe. I might just shout out. 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 I'm retiring. I'm retiring. Unless I hit the wire. Exactly. Exactly. New Jersey. Certainly a great opportunity. Thanks. No, it's one hour. It's a small state, so. You know, you can get around. Anywhere you're willing, we can. Thanks, I appreciate the service. Look, I've been saying I wasn't sure, though. I thought you were. If you need anything, or if you want me to provide any information, I don't know. I get it. I'm sorry. 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 Thanks, I appreciate the service. Look, I've been saying I wasn't sure, though. I thought you were. If you need anything, or if you want me to provide any information, I don't know. I get it. I'm sorry. 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 I like to call the regular meeting of North Huntington County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, May 17, 2017, at 7:00 PM. The order will call manager Shepherd.
Commissioner Harold.
Here.
Commissioner Higginson.
Here.
Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Commissioner Gray.
Commissioner Fessenda.
Here.
Commissioner Kassera.
Here.
And Commissioner Martina.
Here.
Everybody, please rise to the platform, ladies and gentlemen, remain standing for a new prayer by master Nick Cole, Calvary prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Game for a five. Next, I want to attend to citizen's input. Anybody who wants to speak tonight, please sign and walk at the podium. Remember, the night is being video screened and electronically recorded. Our first citizen is Sarah Ury.
Yes.
Take your name and address directly, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ury. My address is 11762 Dartmoor Drive, North Huntington, PA 15642. I'm once again here, this time on the record, to talk about the proposed tower at Curver. First, I just wanted to make a couple comments about the last meeting that we had directly with Corvath and Horizon personnel. There was moments that were very tense. There was some good information that we got, but I don't think it put any of our minds at ease. Two things that I just want to point out as far as the integrity of the folks that were in that room. George Francis was there on behalf of Horizon and Corvath and stated that he was on our Dartmore neighborhood site. It's a site that we use to communicate amongst neighbors and such of things that are happening in the community, in our neighborhood, school field trips, pictures, family, type of that type of stuff. He says with a grin, "And I am on your Dartmoor site, and I can see what you guys are doing." So, Mr. Francis, I would like to rescind the invite to the ice cream social at the end of the year. I feel like, you know, it's so hard to trust people when you feel like you're being sly on. Second thing is that George Wright from Corvath also described the tower, even though it was a monopole stealth power, he was saying that our ordinance does not describe or define what a stealth power is. And that I kind of got the idea, unlike everybody else did, that they could pretty much do anything that they wanted to and label it stealth, to a degree. And they said that the antennas would be on the outside of the actual pole. When we had had discussions in this room with all of you, it was described to us as a stealth power with the antenna inside of the pole. And it would have up to four rows of these antennas being able to be on the outside, flush mounted. When I asked what flush mounted meant, it wasn't up against it, it was at least a few inches off. So again, I'm not sure what the definition of stealth actually is, but when we had discussions prior to that, that was not my interpretation of what a stealth power would be. I know that we cannot deny anything based on reasons other than what's laid forth in the S T C Act, and I understand that. But I'd also like to bring to bear, when people ask me, "Why do you keep try fighting this tower? It's a big corporation, there's nothing that you can really do." I fight because I have to, because if I don't, I would hate myself. I would hate the fact that I didn't fight for my kids, and I would hate the fact that I didn't fight for this community. It's not just about not in my backyard, it's not just about my property, it's about the children in my neighborhood. It's about the fact that you can sit there and say whatever you want to about old studies from 1996, when that law was put into, when that act was put into place, but it's 21 years later, and there's still not good documentation about prolonged exposure, not acute exposure like just going past a cell phone tower or exposed to it for a day. We will be exposed to it 24/7, and so will our kids. And every study that you look at that's out there right now says that there's possible causation to cancer. And the other problem, neurological, and not just for adults, it's even worse for children, because they grow at a different rate, they're still developing, and their skulls are thinner. And pregnant women, and embryos, and babies, it is a real concern. It's not just about it not being in my backyard, it's about it not affecting my children. It's about not affecting the community, and about the fact, I don't think that they had integrity at that meeting, the way that they spoke, the way that they go on to our community sites to spy on us, it just doesn't feel right. And I realize there's nothing that we can do about what the zoning board committee did, but I feel like we as citizens need to be able to speak to you, the people that represent us, and be able to really express the fear that we have for our children and our community, and it's not just us. We're fighting for everybody's children in this community, because once this happens, it's going to happen in other places. On a separate note, but similar, the zoning board, they followed with the zoning requirement for the notifications, and I brought it up on an individual basis to several of the commissioners, that just because it's the minimum doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. I think that you as commissioners need to really look at the notification process for changes and variances. It shouldn't just be posting an eight by ten on a pole down a road and in a newspaper classified section that's obsolete. You are elected to protect the residents. Just because it's the minimum doesn't mean that it's the most you can do, it's the least you can do by definition. So let's think about maybe not this right now, but what are we doing for the future to protect the citizens, to protect the residents, to protect the community?
All set. Next is Kim Giassanti. Take your name and address directly.
Kim Giassanti, 560 Suterland Drive. A few months ago, I was here in front of the board requesting that our road be resurfaced. And I just want to publicly thank you for responding. If you haven't had an opportunity to drive through our neighborhood, I encourage you to do so. It's awesome, the new road. Our neighborhood has totally been enhanced by it, and I really appreciate it. Special thank you to our commissioner, Mike Fessenda. I did not know him at all prior to meeting him for the first time at the polls, voting polls last fall, I guess it was. And he said, you know, "I appreciate your vote, and if there's anything I can do for you, if I win, please let me know." So I let him know a lot of few things. So I really appreciate it, and I just want to tell you that it was done first class. Whoever you had do the construction, I worked from home, so I was able to witness how efficiently they did it, how professionally they did it, and they were really skilled at what they were doing. And thank you too also for reseeding the grass and repairing any kind of construction damage that was done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Kerry Bauer. Take your name and address directly, please.
Kerry Bauer, police officer here at North Huntington, 11279 Center Highway, North Huntington, PA. Thank you. For those of you that don't know, my Canine Vegas recently passed, is actually two weeks ago today. I devoted my life to the Canine work, and I came here to specifically thank Commissioner Hegges, Commissioner Gray, President Martino, project manager, Shepherd, Commissioner Harold. You folks were all on the board and supported me 150% when I bought Canine Vegas. Commissioner Martino, Commissioner Harold, you both went to Canine Rocco's funeral, 150% behind me and the Canine, and I want to thank you so much for that. I worked really hard with this Canine to not only make him my dog, but to make him the township's dog. I devoted the last nine years since I bought him to doing that. We're having a Canine service for him, funeral memorial service at the high school on Saturday at 11:00 AM, and the public is welcome. And from what I understand, it's going to be a huge event, and I wish and hope to see all of you there that can make it. What you don't know about Canine Vegas, nobody knows, because it's just the day-to-day operations with the Canine. I get the dog out every opportunity I can on a call. The day he died, that morning, I was in Greensburg testifying in front of Judge Megan Billick DeFazio on a case from 2015 of a drug dealer, driving through North Huntington with cocaine and a gun in his trunk. I was called to assist a very diligent officer that we have on making drug arrests, to assist him running my dog to do a scan around the exterior of the vehicle and to see if the dog alerted that there were drugs in the car. The dog alerted. That day, that gentleman was arrested. He wanted a jury trial. That morning, I testified. Judge Megan Billick DeFazio classified me as an expert witness, as a Canine handler, because of the great job my dog did. I have a list here of eight things. This is the most memorable things that Canine Vegas has done in his service. One of them is he trapped an armed robber, and there's a newspaper article to show it. There's several assists to the state police of people that he trapped, of drug dealers, drugs that he found. If you'd like me to read them all, if you'd like me to pass it around to the board, you're welcome to see it, whatever you want me to do.
Whatever. You can have it.
Okay. I apologize for my dress today. I'm going to tell you where I was today. I went and had an opportunity. Forty-eight new Canines just came in from Holland. They came in last Wednesday. They were flown here to a gentleman at Shallow Creek Kennels, who sells them and trains the officers. And because of my notoriety in Canine in the profession, because I've been in it so long, they gave me the opportunity to go pick my dog first of those 48 dogs, if I'm afford the opportunity to get the dog. So I just ask for your help with this issue and your support. I really appreciate it. I've dedicated my life to this. I don't have a family, I love my children, I live for Canine. And anybody that knows me, anybody that's going to be there on Saturday is going to tell you that. Thank you.
Next is Joe Lauren Fossey.
So close.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not. Very quickly, though, my question.
Will you come up to the podium, please?
I'll have to back the price later for a second.
I call it then.
All right.
State your name and address directly.
Joe Lauren Fossey, 2116 Belgian Drive. My question is however upfront here, my comments are a bit about the self-encouraged tower, obviously that's going on Curver Farms. Will I have an opportunity to speak later in proceedings here today, or do I need to speak at the Curver Farms? I'd like to defer, once we cover that topic here on council.
It's up to you guys. I mean, you know, ordinarily you have your public comment, this is the time for it, and then you go into a business meeting. If you want to, would you like that?
I would appreciate that, yes.
Well, then it's up to commissioners to decide.
Do it now. Go ahead, do it now. Okay, okay. Appreciate it. So, as I mentioned, I'm here on behalf of many residents of Curver Farms who could not be here this evening. This meeting unfortunately conflicts with several things in the school, and the closing of basically the year for students. What I wanted to talk about today is a little bit about what I've seen for both ends, and a little bit of concern, a little bit of frustration, had turned into more questioning on my half. And this is kind of what I'm hoping to achieve this evening, is receiving some of the answers to some of the things that I've noticed on via the video. Apologies for not being here in person, I started traveling. But some of the things that I've noticed is, when we're talking about this tower, I will start by saying, I believe in everyone's personal right to do whatever they want to do within their own property lines. That's how I feel. I feel that I have a right to do that same thing on my property line as I chose to, if it fell within the ordinance that are applied by the township. My issue comes from the fact that the ordinance, I recognize there should probably have been one from the zoning board here to might to answer these questions. But how can we have a pre-existing awareness, a brand Americans, when just less than five miles away, under a great township, turn down the same opportunity?
So, man. And that's where the frustration's coming from. It's never been answered. We don't know why. We have no concept of why all of a sudden, in an ordinance that was put before by representatives of the people, in an effort for public safety, was quickly overlooked.
So I've taken a step back, and I've not gotten angry initially, I got angry, that's okay, I'm from Philadelphia, I apologize to every panelist fan in the room, I'm sorry. But we're currently playing golf right now. But what I would like to do is actually, again, if I can, and ask the council what I may, if you guys can respond for what you do know. But some of the issues that what I've seen with the council, with the program, is just simply it's a better self-encouragement, better self-encouragement, and human history self-encouragement. The maps that we've all seen are actually maps not based on fact, based on estimation, it's based on what we think will happen. The areas in green, we think will now get self-encouragement. In the wall, I think doesn't cut it. In the areas, I could simply go up there and blotch them white, say my own personal opinion, these will not work without some form of another tower and/or repeater that will actually transmit that signal to around the corner to Turn Valley. Because if you understand self-encouragement, they do not go through rock. That's why we put them on high ground. So in order for that signal to reach there, I can make a valid argument as to I don't believe it will. Now, the other piece of this is what was in 911. I watched the video, as I mentioned. I don't think there's anybody here who would deny 911 access or 911 proficiency is what we view in the township. My question is, how long has this been an issue? As has been discussed before, if this was such an issue, what have we done about it? What actions have we taken steps? Have we solicited the state for extra funding? Why is it now that this 911 issue has become front and center as an active push to get this tower in place? Now, everyone in this room cares about this community. All of you standing up there care about this community, that's why you're in the position you're in. I care about this community. But what I think unfortunately happened is, we were sold a disservice on the value of the tower. We were so eager to see what it could do, and if we could do it, we forgot whether we should do it. And unfortunately, we've positioned ourselves where neighbors have turned against neighbors, the community has turned against itself. And what people have said is, I was not asked, I was not informed. I live in Curb or Farms, as I mentioned. I drive by Curb or Dairy seven to 10 times a day. I've eaten their ice cream, more times than my wife would let me to have eaten their ice cream. But at the end of the day, I didn't notice any of their signs. The signs, I would like to know how large they were. Did they meet with the American ADA Act for disabilities for individuals with poor eyesight? Were they tightening a font that was recognizable from the road? And we all know Donkey Road. It's a 35 mile an hour road with a sharp end, right when you pass Curb or, or when you come into Curb. If you're not paying attention to the road, you're going to cause an accident. So everybody there pays attention to the road. And I would like to challenge one person in this room right now, who tells me that they can read, let's say, an eight and a half by eleven sign, if by a ten by twelve sign, welcome to 35 miles an hour while watching the road. So it's not that I am here to test the tower as an evil thing. I actually concur with the young lady earlier who spoke in reference to, we don't know the specifics around these towers yet. But what I'm here to actually put forth in front of this council is the fact that, if this is to go through, if this is something that we truly deem is necessary for our township to make us a better township, a safer township, whatever you might say, why has it not done in a form to allow the township to come in and review it, the citizens, the council? You know, comments have been made ahead, this is great that these meetings are getting harder, but at the end of the day, these meetings should not be large. The point of government is elected officials who come in and represent the people for the people. And unfortunately, what this was a representation of, was a new business opportunity for Verizon. And that's all this is. That's all this is. He gets shot down in Hethfield, I'm going to move to the next township. I get shot down in that township, I'm going to move to the next township. I've spent my life in sales, when the door's open to a customer, I go to the next one. I tweet my speech, I alter what I say, position a different value prop that hopefully people will buy into, but at the end of the day, I'm selling the same bill of goods. So that is the frustration, I think, for many of us here, and I think that's the frustration for myself. Where, you know, we can say that this is an ethical situation, we can say that there's violations here, there's violations there, we can first don't finish other all day long if we want to. But at the end of the day, what it's simply come down to is this. Gentlemen, I promise you are elected to us to represent the people. And I think you did a great job doing so. Unfortunately, I think you were sold with little goods about the value of this particular tower, and what it can actually do for us. And if the tower is such a remarkable thing, I've heard many people say, let's relocate the tower. I've heard that's impossible. We can't, that's the best spot possible for it. As I mentioned, self-coverage towers and how they work, it's clear basic line of sight. If you live 15 yards down a hill, you're still going to need another tower to repeat the thing around the corner. So I've had experience in it, I know it. And because I know it, I know that it's a line of goal that's sole to all of us to make this thing, that this is the next best possible solution for the ordinance and township. And I think the right thing to do in this, we'll take a step back, we'll say, we need to reevaluate this, and potentially, this is not what we need at this particular juncture. Because if this passes, I will tell you right now, I'm going to do about the 22 acres in the other side, I'm going to put in an application and get a tower put up. And we're opening up a Pandora's box for that to happen. So I trust in you, I trust in council here, I trust that you guys will do the right thing for the people. And after further evaluation, if this comes out and this is the turn, and this is the best thing for the people, you have my backing 110 percent. Thank you.
That's it for citizens' input. Okay, the ones that were talking about this power.
We'll address that.
We'll address it when it comes up on the agenda, okay? Kim, thank you very much for your time, Mark. For, see your Glen Drive, appreciate it. Carrie, anybody have comments for Carrie?
Obviously, just appreciate all your service and Vegas' service to the township. I don't know if you're asking basically for orders approval, or kind of okay to maybe advance forward, you know, in the search of a new dog, but if you were looking for that, you have my full-fledged support. I don't know if you want that in a formal motion tonight, but if you are, I can make that.
That would be great, thank you.
I personally think that's appropriate, that way it gets put together. So are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allow Carrie to explore options for a new canine dog officer.
I'll second a motion.
Yeah, what it is, is a motion added to the agenda. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Approved. There's no cost to the township, is there Carrie?
We understand.
There's no cost, right?
These guys figure those things out. There's no comment, so the motion put it on the agenda is ripe for a vote at this point.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, the motion's worked.
Six zero.
I'll make that in the form of a motion that we allow Carrie to explore options for purchasing a new canine officer.
Thank you.
Your second.
I have a second.
Discussion.
Yeah, this is something I thought about for a while, and me personally, I would like to see us, the department go back to three canines on the force. I don't know how you feel about that, Carrie.
That would be wonderful.
My personal opinion is, is I would like to see the department go back to the three canines. I don't know if that's something we want to explore in more detail. I think it would, one, it would lessen the burden on the two canine officers that would do that. You know, be able to separate rotation of the canine officers. So I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, since we're open, you know, open to discussion on that, welcome to other comments.
Darryl, I think the right, this isn't a bad time to think about that, and I know that probably in a few months from now, Mike and the staffs can put together the budget for 18, so that's something they want to maybe try to work into the budget if it works from their perspective. I think the police would be supportive of that.
I really do, but we need to relook at that and go back to around 1340 for canine again. Just my opinion, I don't know if anybody else, like you, that don't have it.
I'll add a bit to it. You know, over the years, we always did, well, not always, whenever I was involved in the program, we had the two dogs, but things weren't like they are today. The drugs aren't like they are today. Prior to Bruce Capra retiring, we did have the three dogs. And it made the availability of having a dog, especially on weekends, and officer stays off, dog stays off, the availability for the dog to be there. So yeah, I'd be more than happy to see it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe there are some other officers downstairs that are canine trained.
Yes, we do have prior canine handlers, yes.
That's what I thought. So, I mean, training, I don't think would be better for it at this point.
Both prior handlers?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm definitely okay with lowering that for next year's budget.
Yeah, exactly, I definitely agree.
Yeah, we'll lower that for next year's budget, I'll give it that.
I'm pushing for one canine.
More discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero. Any other citizens input at this time? Any approval, Minister, for a special meeting on April 13th?
Let's do approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero. Approval of Minister, regular meeting on 4/19th, that is.
Let's do approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero. Payment bills?
Make the motion and pay the option number 74148 through the option number 74236.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero. Staff reports. Public work report, anybody have anything for Minister Allen?
Yes, I might just echo Kim, just rather than township seeing some of the roads that engineers and contractors have done, I've heard a lot of well responses to repeat what Kim has said, so they're doing a great job so far in the early stages, appreciate the work.
They have been, I mean, we're quite pleased with what they've done. This is the second year we've used this contractor, Bob Robinson, our engineer and inspector, making some mistakes with the IHOP support also.
Yeah, Rich, and your guys have done a great job of getting stuff ready, buildings down there on Martin Drive, and I guess they did pull out for right now and they will be back.
That's correct. We're working diligently, it's a big program this year, so we have a lot to do.
Sure, a year ago, I think we added as a board $500,000 to beef up the program, and it seems like it's working in express thanks to your guys.
I'll do that for you.
Rich? Rich, I did want to ask you about Buttermilk. You seem to have a little gas line problem there, that's all taken care of.
Well, there, I'm not sure if the status of it is at this point, other than the fact what the milling procedure was going on, and the milling machine did the gas, the gas line, was, you know, was a very deep under the surface. The gas companies gave a head and they replaced the whole line. Buttermilk probably will be in the phase two of the paving. You know, by that time, of course, everything will be back and good shape and ready to go.
I did want to ask you the saw cut that they made on Center Avenue, along that connects to the other part of Buttermilk, will that be repaired, all that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It'll be all done, according to the ordinance.
It really hurt, well, watching that saw cut, that new pavement on the other side.
I know, it's unfortunate that other things happen.
Hey, Rich, just one other thing, just pass on my thanks and appreciation to you guys, as well as the sentiments from some of the residents of the cul-de-sac at Drop Road. I see the cul-de-sac has been revitalized.
It has been, yes.
It looks great, by the way, I've got a couple of thank yous and comments back from some of the folks that live, that are on the cul-de-sac, so I much appreciated the work you guys did done there. It looks like it's going to be a little maintenance to go over.
Thanks, it's nice to have a professional landscaper on the staff.
That does make things nice, yeah.
Things like that.
All right, so I was on Drop Road too, was it our guys who did something with that?
The cul-de-sac, you mean?
Yeah, okay, is that what you were saying about?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, that wave and I took a ride down there, that's what we're, it was great.
Rich, you have anything for your ministers?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Parks Recreation, anybody having any questions or comments to add?
I got a couple for Kim, and it was brought to my attention by some people, and that, down in Pens Woods Playground, they seem to be tearing down part of the playground and they taped it off. What are our plans there? I know right now, you're playing catch-up on grass and that because of the rainy season, but what are we going to do there?
Yeah, Commissioner, there's a structure at Pens Woods Park, specifically a slide board there that we've started to disassemble. It's outdated, it's outdated, and it has been budgeted, then we put a piece of playground equipment in there, so there'll be a new piece installed there. Hopefully, we get to that this summer, that's our goal, but right now, that's caution taped off because we're trying to remove it.
Okay, and the other thing is, there were two little toxic buildings, I guess a tree come down and hit them? Has that been made safe, or has been?
Yeah, there was no structural damage to that, and actually, our park staff is there today and has made those repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, I have a question for you on Indian Lake, how did the paving go?
I couldn't have been more pleased, that back parking lot is just a fine addition to the new pavilion back there, it certainly makes access much more easy, and we're finishing up a small project at the front parking lot of Indian Lake.
I do want to ask.
It's been a good renovation for us over there.
Looks really good. Are we going to add handicap parking to the newer paved area?
Right, there'll be handicap parking in the existing upper lot in the front, and do handicap parking in the back as well. The line striping still needs to be done, that's kind of a finishing touch as well, that should happen here, hopefully, within a month.
Yeah, good project.
Thanks.
Really, you have anything for your group?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next one's police report. Anybody having questions or?
Just a comment for Rod Mahinsky, he's not here tonight, I think he just actually came, got back into town, he was away of training, so if there's anything that the board would have for Rod, he'll certainly be available, and he can actually be in here at the meeting at some point this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Emergency manager report, anybody having anything on routine control? Planning and engineering report. Fire officials report. Subdivision land development application report. And Mr. Land visit, I'm here, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Andy was not able to make the meeting tonight, so I will read those for the board, everybody's familiar with those, we talked about it with the work session last week. First item on the agenda tonight is action to approve a resolution for proposed boundary line adjustment along First Street and Kuyfrood Lane, that's the Paul Curb or Two Plan of subdivision.
Question approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item number two is the Weber Estates Plan of subdivision's action to approve a resolution for a proposed residential development on Colonial Manor Road.
Question approved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item three is the Stratton Plan, that's action to approve a resolution for a proposed subdivision on Guffey Reilton Road.
Question approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, Carrie, six zero.
Item four is the Verizon Coref Communication Cell Tower Site Plan. This is action to approve a resolution for a site plan for a proposed cell tower on the Curb or Farm property, which denies the site plan. If this gets a motion at the second for approval, the board might want to discuss his input or responses to that at this point. Yes, it's in the book, everybody's been made aware of that. Do you feel we need, want to read it? Absolutely. I apologize, actually don't see that one, Michael, give me one second, please. This is it. This is a resolution of the Township of North Huntington, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, denying SP-02-2017, the Verizon Coref Communications Cell Tower. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of North Huntington, Westmoreland County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as follows. Section one, following site plan application, SP-02-2017 Verizon Coref Communications Cell Tower is denied. Section two, the denial is based upon the fact that the applicant failed to refuse to submit a conditional use application as required in our ordinance number 765, which was amended by ordinance number 936 in 1998 for all cell towers in residential districts. Section three, if any sentence clause, section or part of this resolution is for any reason found to be unconstitutional, illegal or invalid, such on constitutionality, illegality or invalidity, should not affect or impair any of the remaining provisions, sentences, clauses, sections or parts of this resolution. It is hereby declared as the intent of the township, North Huntington, that this resolution would have been adopted if such unconstitutional, illegal or invalid sentence, clause, section or part thereof not be included. Any resolution or part of any resolution which may be in conflict with the provisions of this resolution should be the same or hereby repealed insofar as they may conflict with the provisions of this resolution adopted this day, May 17, 2017.
I just want to confirm that the staff has not received any application for conditional use application.
I'm not aware of any coming in, it's our last meeting.
I certainly haven't been made aware of it, now this is 20 to 8 on May 17, 2017.
Okay. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that by approving that resolution, that is actually denying the site plan.
Correct. Most do approve.
Second.
We have a discussion, we did have a couple of citizens.
Raise your hand if you're here for that for a particular reason, because you don't want it. Who else is here about the self-coverage? Just so you get a true feeling of what's going on in the truth.
I mean, I've set my piece, and most of you probably either watched or were at some of the meetings, and I talked about it for residents, and yeah, I am happy when this room is full, and I will continue to be happy when this room is full. I think in foreign residence is a good thing, and I appreciate Commissioner Gray at broadcast the meetings online, we're working on our township webpage, and hopefully we'll have that capability to do it through the township's webpage as well. And I appreciate the citizens being involved, and I received a lot of concerned citizens that aren't in your area that said, you know, they don't want it in their area, it would come to their area as well. So I am in favor of, you know, not approving this and approving a resolution that John read, but at that point, just because we don't approve, it doesn't mean that it's not going to be put in place. I'm sure the solicitor is probably going to go to Westmoreland County and file an appeal soon, as maybe tomorrow morning, but at least we can be your voice, and I appreciate you being here, and I thank you for your comments and concern.
No, I don't really think we need to say much.
I would appreciate that we keep our comments minimal, because I don't want to try to case in the public here.
And I also thank the people for being here.
One more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero. Next item on the agenda is solicitor.
I have no other report, other than to say I'm going to miss John. I can't believe his legs.
Next item is, management report.
Thank you, first item is action to approve the April check register.
Question approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item two is the budget report from April 2017, if you have any comments on that. If not, item number three is action to approve a resolution to authorize overhead banners for the St. English Church Bazaar on Route 30 near Maltz Lane and Lincoln Highway at Jody Lane.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item four is action to approve the tax sale for property identified as tax map 54-07-12-0-032, 10-0499 Broadway Street, in accordance with the April 17, 2017 letter from Westmoreland County.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item five is action to approve the request of Pens Woods Civic Association for a fireworks display on July 4, 2017, in Pens Woods Park.
Motion approved, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item six is action to approve payments to Liberone Incorporated in the following amounts, the 2017 building and resurfacing program, $697,336.09 in Indian Lake Park parking lot,
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, that is six zero.
Item seven is action to accept my resignation effective May 29, 2017.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just like to make comment that, you know, John's going to be sadly missed, he needs a credit to this township. I attended a excellence in education luncheon with him last week, I believe it was, and his talk expressed the love that he had for this township, and for the school district, for North Huntington Township in general. And from that talk and that, I kind of got the idea John really didn't want to leave, and I know it's not about money, and it's about other things, and I'm not going to get into personnel, personal things, but I, for one, really miss John. He's an asset to this community, and he's going to be missed by his community.
I have to, I have to second those remarks here, Mr. Professor. John's always helped me out when I needed help, he knew what's going on, when I needed something I didn't understand, he did correct me in the correct way. When I needed something and I didn't understand, he did direct me in the correct way, work out, since this is the first time, the president, how to run it. I really appreciate his help. I've been missing.
John, I just want to thank you for your service to the township, and, you know, I haven't been here very long, but we had some pretty good conversations over a year and a half, I guess, so I appreciate the advice you give me over that tenure, and I wish you well. Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
John, I wish you the best. We'll miss you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, sir.
Tony. Mr. President.
Yes?
I say something also. Asia. We worked together for a long time. It's like a double-edged sword for me. I'm so happy for him. He's found his happiness. It don't matter in hell that he's leaving us. They always say that everybody can be replaced, and that's true, but it's not going to be easy replacing you. We've accomplished a lot over the years with your leadership and all your guidance. I remember whenever I, when you first started, I had been here a number of years as the assistant director, and whenever I had been appointed to director's position, you took me under your wing, and you showed me the guidance and brought me up to the next level of professionalism. I can't thank you enough for that. Really going to miss working with you. It's really been a pleasure and an honor to work with you over the years. Again, taught me a lot, and, you know, I'll always be here for you, and I'm sure you'll still be there for a lot of me, but everybody here in North Huntington. You might want to change yourself a number. You've given me a lot of opinions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Tony, if I could say one or two words?
Rich.
Yeah, absolutely. I've been doing this business of municipal law, public law, school law, forty-five years. I shouldn't be saying that because it kind of tips the hand that I'm a little over than I hope that people think. I've seen hundreds of managers. I've seen hundreds of superintendents. I've worked with some of the best and some of the worst. Unfortunately for North Huntington, you're losing what I consider the best. Somebody in New Jersey is gaining a gem, and I think that John is going to go on to do better things than here. I think his star is still rising. I look forward to hearing from him in the future on how things are going. He has been, there's no question, an asset for North Huntington. He's going to be an asset for his next employer, and I just hope that his star continues to rise as it has over the years, and I'm going to miss you too, John. Thank you. I just wanted to thank a few people because I've been here for a lot of years, and I haven't had a chance to do this, and sometimes people don't get thanked. We just get, we get some criticism that we deserve at times. So are department directors. Gene Kamon Doris in charge of emergency management. Gene's not here today. He's a volunteer. Bob Martin's sitting back there. Bob used to be a commissioner. He's on the emergency management committee. He's a volunteer. There's a lot of people that volunteer here to do things for no cost for the community. So thank you, Bob, and thank Gene, even though he's not here tonight. I would like to thank Dan Miller. Dan's the director of Parks and Recreation, gives it a hundred percent every day, and Dan, thanks, you've been a great friend and a great employee for North Huntington Township. You brought Parks and Recreation forward, probably more than I ever thought could happen. He's done a great job with that. I would like to thank Andy Blenko. Andy's our planning and zoning director. He's not here this evening, but Andy is a great asset to the township. He's not only a professional engineer, he's also an attorney, and he's a very qualified person. We're very blessed to have someone at his level in the role that he is in North Huntington Township for a community of our size. I would like to thank Rod Mahinsky. Rod just walked in tonight. He's been at training. He's normally in uniform. You know, he's the lieutenant. He's the acting chief in North Huntington. We've worked together for many years. They've been all good years, and Rod, I wish you the absolute best, and I hope you move forward here in North Huntington, and you would definitely have my support if I was still here for you to be the chief of the police. So I appreciate you coming in tonight. I know you've been out all day. I would like to thank Rich Albert. Rich has been a great friend, a great asset to the community. We've known each other for a long time. His dedication is unparalleled. He has more accumulated sick days and vacation days than half the staff combined because he doesn't miss work, and that's because he's dedicated. He comes in sick. He's up in the middle of the night. He's doing snow removal. He's not perfect, but he does a fabulous job, and his, the last day he works here, he'll be working until three o'clock is when he'll leave that day, and that's appreciated, and he doesn't get many words of appreciation, which usually concerns criticisms because there's an issue. So, Rich, I appreciate all your support over the years. My administrative staff, Lisa Ritz, Nancy Bolden, Julian Morgan. Julian is here tonight. She's been with me for many years, great asset to North Huntington. I appreciate her support and all her hard work. Margie Ward and Levon Shields, employees that have been here for so long, they're so dedicated to North Huntington that it's amazing, and they're all on the back end. They do an absolutely wonderful job. On the board, I want to thank Daryl and Tony for your support over the years, and Daryl's been relatively, like you said, we've had a lot of great discussions. I want to thank Dwayne Casero. Dwayne and I were coworkers more than we were in this position because he was at the police department for so many years, but we always had a great relationship. You've been, you moved into the role of commissioner quite well rather than from employee, so thank you. Commissioner Heges was a commissioner that voted against me coming to North Huntington Township because he had reasons to do that, and he probably has some good reasons in his mind, and I only say that because I can tell you that since that vote, he's been nothing but professional, supportive, and no one could ask for anything more than that. So I thank you for that. I thank you for all of your support, and you challenged me what I would challenge, and that's fine, but you've always been professional and supportive, and I appreciate that. And Commissioner Gray, who's in the back tonight because he's up front because of the Verizon matter, it's a conflict for him. Rich was here when I was hired. I came to North Huntington the first time back in nineteen ninety-eight, and prior to Rich being here, I think he was on the board for a short period of time, and there was some change over at Commissioner Murdaugh, I believe was here at that point. And I will tell you that years ago, and I want to thank him because at that point in time, if it was, I was hot, no one like me would ever be hired in North Huntington. North Huntington was a very political place. You were hired because someone knew you. It wasn't because you were qualified, and I think they decided to change direction and realized this community deserved better. It happened to be me. It could have been anybody that they hired as long as they were qualified. I was fortunate enough to get the job here and be able to come back home and be the manager for North Huntington. So I want to thank him because, and the board at that time, because they were willing to make that change, and you don't see those, maybe you don't realize that, you don't see those changes, but administratively, and what they've done is put North Huntington in the right mold for the future. I think the organization needs to be professional and not political, so I hope it continues to be that way, and I want to thank him for that and all his service and his support over the years. Thank you.
I guess I'll be tough on you still. You were already here when I got elected, so I didn't vote against you. You're already here, so I'll be tough on you on the way out the door.
I thought you voted against me.
Yeah, you're already here. I'll be tough on you too, you know.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero.
Few more items. Item number eight is action to appoint Mike Turley as acting township manager and secretary treasurer at the annual salary of ninety-five thousand dollars in approval of the severance agreement contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero.
Item nine is action to award the bid for the Lilac Street retaining wall to Westmoreland Construction Group in the amount of sixty thousand fifty-two dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero.
I have two other items. I apologize, they're add-ons, so I'm hoping the board will entertain these and get public input as necessary. Item ten is action to hire Jonathan Beskett as an administration department intern at a rate of ten dollars per hour. As you know, Jonathan's currently with us as an unpaid intern, and it's something that Mr. Turley has requested some assistance over the next few months, finalizing the new webpage, so that's an action item for the board to consider if you're so willing to make that as an informal motion.
I'm making a message out of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, did I, citizen input on it?
That means that the website's going to be more functional than absolutely. Pam?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero.
So that would be an action to hire Jonathan Beskett as an administration department intern at a rate of ten dollars per hour.
You sent the memo out, I guess, this afternoon or earlier today.
Yes.
I believe some of the other board members commented, and I commented too, and I'm totally in agreement, but I put some, I guess, verbiage on that, that hire the intern, and then maybe after we get a new manager and that search is conducted and ended, we would reevaluate any of the intern at that point.
Yeah, I think it might even be a shorter term than that because of restrictions that he might have. It's going to be short for a short period.
Okay.
Probably a few month period.
I'll make a motion to hire the intern at the rate of ten dollars per hour.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero.
One additional item, and this is related to the search for the new manager. This would be action to adopt a resolution which approves a letter of intent which requests assistance from the Governor's Center for Local Government Services to provide assistance with the township manager search. This would be utilizing the assistance of Mike Forman, who I think most of the board's aware of, to provide assistance, and I know the board has at least been discussed that somewhat, but there's a formal to do that, either a formal motion or resolution, and if you don't do it at tonight's meeting, you're going to be, you know, one month behind on that, so that's an item that you might want to consider approving tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Make a motion, add it to the agenda. That's the motion. That's the motion is. Okay, discussion. You have any citizens input on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero to add to the agenda.
So again, it's an action to adopt a resolution which approves a letter of intent which requests assistance from the Governor's Center for Local Government Services to provide assistance with the township manager search.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye to have it six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepherd. Any further board comment?
Just one. Department of Parks and Recreation has officially started the tag fish contest that will continue through October at Indian Lake and Ocala Parks.